Good evening and welcome to the Curriculum and Evaluation Committee meeting on Tuesday, June 22, 2021. We are in the Nashua North Boardroom. We have in attendance Sharon Gilio and Jessica Brown, both present. And also in attendance, we have Dr. Garth McKinney, Mr. Anthony Parker, Meg Peterson, and Sherri Fulton. And so for our first item of business, we're talking about the MTSSB Behavioral Health. It's multi-tiered system of support for behavioral health. So if we'd like to go ahead and turn it over to our guest speakers this evening.
Thank you so much for having us. So at Dr. Crisp this year, we are, have been involved in MTSSB, which as you said, was multi-tiered systems of support for behavior, health, and wellness. We felt very fortunate to be chosen to enjoy this grant and to take the experience that we're getting from the DOE. So let me take us to our next slide. So MTSSB is really a framework, and it is helping us to coordinate and improve the systems for the students' wellness in our building. It is reliable on the, what's existing in our school as well as, and we'll talk in a minute, there's another committee that we formed, community leaders to reach out to help with the behavior wellness in partnerships, and then strong communication between all of us. It is local. Our key components will be social, emotional health, and mental health for everyone. We have a tiered prevention framework that we'll talk about. We've integrated behavior health system and how we're going to deliver it to our students. And we'll be focusing on the student outcomes in the building. So MTSSB began, we began thinking about doing it in Nashua, and I have a timeline. Oh, thank you. Sorry. I have a timeline. I'll show you in just a minute. But based on some, the year-end data that we had from the Nashua High School classroom of about 25 kiddos, we found that when they surveyed those students, eight of them, eight of them were feeling sad and hopeless almost every day for two weeks or more. Seven lived with someone who had a problem with drugs and alcohol, four even considered suicide, four had seen adults in their home hurt someone, and two have parents that are incarcerated. So looking at these, we knew that Nashua was a good site to begin with, and we were chosen from Dr. Crisp. So here's our timeline that we've been working on. In January of 2020, the school district was approached by the Office of Social and Emotional Wellness from the DOE to see if we wanted to think about doing MTSSB in Nashua. Then in February of that same year, they selected Dr. Crisp, but we were so fortunate to be identified as the pilot study of this program. Then in June of 2020, we began, and I was talking about the partnerships that we have, so we began a leadership, a district community leadership team. So it's, and in a minute, I'll show you the people that are on it, but it is made up of community members as well as members of Dr. Crisp and also the other, some of the other schools. And we talk and begin discussing how we're going to further MTSSB in the district. September of 2020 became our first Tier One meeting at Dr. Crisp. And again, if you remember, some of the focused outcomes, one is the tier prevention. So we chose Tier One at our school, and I can tell you why in a few minutes of how we looked at all the different tiers of the children, and we felt that one was where we wanted to start because it reached everyone, and it gave everyone a great starting point. Then in December, the, we got a grant. It's a Promising Futures Grant, and through work with Garth, they've been helping us to decide how we're going to be able to spend the money in the project aware so that we can further this, this work that we're doing. And in January to now, we've been meeting monthly, either the district level team and also the Dr. Crisp leadership team. So between the two of us, we have two, two times a month that we're getting together and meeting. So the first thing we did was we explored whether or not we wanted to do multi-tiered system of support for behavior wellness. We, there was an exploration team. We talked about the understanding of what is it, what it can bring to our school and our district, the different partnerships that would be available in Nashua, and who wanted to come and step up and, and help us with this. And it was decided that we would adopt it. So on the district level, we established a district community leadership team. We went back and forth trying to make sure that everyone understood the true meaning of MTSSB and what our focus would be. We came up with a mission statement. We worked a few, a few months actually on a good mission statement. We reviewed risks, factors. We did a fidelity assessment. And in red is what we're going to be doing. We're going to be assessing current status of how it's going at Dr. Crisp, and then talking about whether we want to move it somewhere else in Nashua as well. An action plan is being developed right now to demonstrate what we're doing in schools. We're coming up with our procedures and constantly conducting assessments to see how we're doing. So at Dr. Crisp, we established a school team. It was our leadership team. We talked a lot about what is MTSSB, what does it mean, and how can it help us? We went to agencies and talked about how they were going to support us as well. We had a fidelity assessment, and we've come up with a school-wide action plan, which I'll show you in just a minute. We're going to continue with an evaluation plan continuously each year. Our procedures are, we're really getting excited about what are some of the school-wide procedures we're going to have, and everyone's going to be doing those with fidelity in September. This is kind of like a big kickoff to Dr. Crisp. And again, conducting our monitoring and assessment, and that's one of our goals. So in Nashua, we started talking about mobilizing the people, and then we started looking at the data that we were given and what we took from our assessments. We started with a plan. We moved to implement the strategies, and we are still doing that this year. And then we're looking toward the progress. So on a district level, we have the district community leadership team. And then on the school level, we looked at all three tiers. Dr. Crisp decided to focus on Tier One in this upcoming year. This is a school-wide tier where all of the children will be benefiting from what we've talked about and what we decided will be the best for the behavior wellness in our building. We talked about the strengths we have already in place for Tier Two and Tier Three, but knowing that as we go forward, we would like to make that stronger as well. But we decided to start with everyone first. I know this is small, but you can see that these are the people involved. So on the left is the district team. We have representatives from, you know, the 21st Century Program. I'm on it. Meg's on it. We have Greater Nashua. Mental Health is on it. The school counselors are on it. We have a school-wide social worker on it. Outreach, ELL coordinator. So as many people as we could think of, grant writers. Paula's on it. Behavior specialist. As many people as we could come up with in the district that wanted to help everyone is on that team. And then our individual leadership team is comprised of all of us as well as a grade level team member, a specialist, a parent, a para educator. The reading specialist is on it. Our behavior specialist for the district, Sharice Boston, is on it, as well as we have a coordinator from the Department of Education, Catherine Luzewing. So she's been amazing to help us get this all taken care of. So we started with data, and we reviewed our school demographics and the, any community data that we had. We talked about our social and behavior discipline data that we had collected. We looked at currently what of our, what students have taken advantage of our behavior health initiatives that we have in the building, as well as doing the MTSSB survey fidelity inventory with our team. So we came up with three goals to make our plan. Our goals, the first one is to improve data collection by, and use by acquiring, implementing, and sustaining school-wide information, which is SWISS. And that is a program that we are purchasing and training for people in the building so that they can keep the data that we collect throughout the year and then go over the data each month at all of our meetings so we can see how we're doing with the children. The second was to develop a school-wide behavior expectations and to teach them in all areas. We've come up with, I'll show you in a moment. It's kind of small, but we've come up with a behavior we'd like in the hallway, in the classroom, in the cafeteria, in the bathrooms.
Recession.
Recession, right. All of those things are very important. And then the last thing is to inventory and align the Tier One supports using evidence to measure efficiency, redundancy, and necessity. And that is, we have decided to go with Zones of Regulation as well as Choose Love. So those are our two big programs for next year. So here's an example. We are, like I said, we're going to be going with SWISS to collect our data. We took Wildcats, our mascot. So we took the acronym CATS and came up with Behavior Expectations under C-A-T-S. And then all of, we took it even further by, like I said, going over what we would expect in all areas of our building. Then we're going to be talking about Zones, or using Zones of Regulation. We have a training coming up on August 6th for the staff. Choose Love is a curriculum that we're strong with also for SEL. And then we're doing a lot of family engagement activities to bring our parents on board with all of our new ideas. So to monitor our progress, the SWISS data will be looked at monthly. It will, the full staff will be biannual, and then the fidelity, we will do it every single year. For developing our school-wide expectations, we will have, look at our SWISS referrals, how are we doing? Attendance, academics, add a Tier One team meeting each month, and then again, our fidelity inventory once a year. And then for the inventory and aligning the Tier One supports, we will be looking at Zones of Regulation. They have a pre and a post questionnaire, family engagement attendance, and outreach numbers, and then again, the inventory. So the future at Dr. Crisp. This summer, we are working to design lesson plans to teach the school-wide behavior expectations that we have come up with on our CATS poster. That will be July 15th in our building. The teachers are coming in to work on getting that all ready so we have everything for the children on the first day of school. We have a SWISS training for four of our staff members so that they're ready to go. Zones of Regulation is August 6th, and that's for the entire staff. It is a webinar all day long, as well as we purchased all the books and posters for each classroom and each teacher. And then we will resume our Tier One monthly meetings in the fall. On the district level, I know that there is hopes of hiring an MTSSB coach for Nashua, continuing to assess the existing mental health systems that we have in place in Nashua, and to strengthen the partnerships that we have working with everyone, to resume our monthly meetings that we, that we've been doing. And then, fingers crossed, other potential sites in Nashua where other schools can take advantage of this amazing program. That's us. Do you have any questions that we can answer?
I have one. So it makes sense to start with Tier One because as you said, that includes all of the students. But until you, you work up to the Tier Two and Tier Three, what, what is in place for the students who maybe fall into one of those two categories?
That's a great question. So at Dr. Crisp, we have a reset and rethink room. It is based for students, mostly I think Tier Two kiddos go there as well. It's a place to sit and relax and bring yourself back and talk it over, go through the zones. They walk in and they choose what color they're in. They talk about it, and before they can leave, they're, they've got their body under control. We also have a social worker, and we have a school counselor that work with our students. And then for our Tier Three students, the same thing on a higher level. But we, we haven't had as many students in that category, and the hope is that we can keep it to twos and ones. But we'd like to make sure that everybody understands the expectations at Level One first.
Thank you.
Can you write down, also, we have Paula Johnson has joined us this evening as a guest, and I think Ms. Johnson has a question. Go ahead.
Yes, thank you very much. Do the parents have to buy into this program? And are they fully aware of the program with any parental consent?
You know, I, I don't know if there's parental consent to the program. That's something we can ask Catherine. But we do know, we have parents on our committee, on, on both of the committees that have been joining in, as well as when we have our parent meetings, we're bringing them and updating them on the next thing that we've worked on.
So I guess my question is, all this data that you're collecting and that SWISS is collecting, does anybody else get to look at this data other than the school district? Does it, does it, it doesn't get sold out? Nobody knows anything about this? This is all private under HIPAA, under FOPA and everything?
And it follows HB 1612, yes.
Okay. And I guess one of my big concerns is parents understanding exactly this program because tonight on policy or updating, that what has to do with kids that have emotional problems somewhat. And we're talking about rooms that they go into when they, and so this kind of concerns me too, because I even called an advocate to get her opinion about some of this stuff. So we're going to take kids out of the classroom, they're going to go into a room so they can cool down, and they're going to get to reflect. It's a timeout room, really. That's what it is, timeout. Well, and you could shake your head yes and no, but you know.
More of a break room. So I like to stay in there quite a bit, actually, because you go in and there's like an aquarium on the ceiling, and they have it projected, and it's quiet and kind of low-key. And the kids can come in, and they get to choose what they feel like they need to do to bring themselves down. Some kids ask to go to the R&amp;R room. Some kids are brought down there just as a walk. Some kids come in on a pre-scheduled break time to access it. There's Play-Doh, there's squishy poppers, there's all that kind of stuff in there for them to participate in.
So are we having any school psychologist that's really going to evaluate any of these kids? Or these students have IEPs or anything? Because I mean, it's, I'm listening to this whole thing, and I'm just kind of like, my zoning in my brain here, because some of these kids that have emotional problems, so this is, you know, we have emotional problems. But we're also moving them out of the classroom because their, their problems are overwhelming at this point, and there's interrupting themselves and the rest of the class. Am I correct?
Yes, and we do have, our school psychologist does work with the room and, and students, but it's accessible by any student. Doesn't matter if you have an IEP, 504, anyone can use it. And like Meg said, we, we enjoy going in there. It's a nice break area where you can just kind of sit and calm down.
And again, my question is, are the parents aware of all this?
Yes, they are. They get, they get notification if a child is in there. They, you know, our social worker will call, the teacher will call, I will call. They get a note. They're, they're very much aware of the room, and they've, they've toured the room when they've come through our building.
Okay, so all parents are aware of this at the beginning of the school year?
It is part of our open house. It is part of our, yeah, of what we do at Dr. Crisp when they come in.
Okay, thank you.
Dr. McKinney, do you have something to add?
Yes, I was going to clarify two things. I don't think it's fair to compare what the presenters are sharing to the policy around restraint and seclusion. Nobody is saying they're putting hands on, and nobody is getting mental health services without parent permission. I think it's perfectly within the purview of the administration to set school-wide expectations, school-wide goals, and clarify behavior across the building according to policy. Asking kids to improve their self-regulation, their self-awareness, be able to verbalize and communicate their needs and feelings is perfectly appropriate. Now, what happens after that, I think, is something we want to collaborate with parents on. But I just want to clarify, it's not necessarily a program. We follow the same RTI model and instruction. It's based on the level of needs. We match need with a resource so kids can be successful. So if kids are running out of the room all the time, what's a resource we can do to make them be successful? It's not, we're going to put you in a chill zone and lock, close the door, or we're not going to keep you in the reset rethink room all the time. This is a kid-centered approach, and I think kids enjoy learning about being successful, understanding their feelings, being able to ask for help, and then celebrate the successes as they go across their school careers. So it's not a punitive piece. I think it's only fair, just as adults, that we set expectations before we deliver consequences. I'm a parent, and I have three kids. I know what my kid's getting in trouble for something they didn't know about. So all of this is in an effort to make that perfectly clear for them, the parents, the families, and the teachers, so everybody's on board. Like, what's the school all about? We're the CATS, and it says it right in there. Thank you.
Thank you. Did you have any more questions, Ms. Johnson?
No.
Okay, thank you. So I had a couple of questions. Actually, I kind of have a follow-up to that one. So in a, on a typical scenario, how much time would a student be spending in the reset room?
I think 10 minutes, maybe. Yeah.
Okay, so they're not losing out on a lot of, like, curriculum and education time generally if that's, if that's the scenario? Okay. So let's see, I had two questions on the presentation. Actually, I'll go in the order. I'm going to go backwards because I think they kind of correlate with what we're already talking about. How are you collecting the data, and what are you collecting about students in order to move forward? And is that data tied to individual students? Is it personal? Is it in their records?
It's on their records. No, it's not in their records. It's, SWISS is a program that is online, and then we will be able to register, you know, if a child visited the R&amp;R room, then we'll know that, you know, how many times. Like, if, that can give us a warning that, oh, they've been there way too many times, or they've been accessing it and using it correctly, how long have they been there? It, it gives us good data for what the behaviors is happening at Dr. Crisp so that we have it. Right now, we do Homegrown. We do our own charts on Google, and we try our very best to keep it all, you know, straight. But I think using a SWISS program will help us to, and it's based on the Zones of Regulation, so that will help a lot, too.
And how would that data follow the student to the next grade level or the next school, middle school, and so on?
I don't believe it does follow them. I think it's, it's, we look at it, we use it throughout the year, and then it's a fresh start the next year. It isn't something that follows them.
Okay. All right. So at, so at the end of the year, there's kind of, it's like a clean slate?
Mm-hmm. Yep.
All right. Let's see, my other question is actually about, you're speaking of moving forward into the next, the next phase of, of the program, the framework, I'm sorry. Do you think that this implementation schedule for that has been affected by COVID? Do you still think you're on track to kind of advance the program or deliver it to other schools or school-wide and that kind of thing?
I think it is. I, I actually, in a way, this was a gift for us because we spent a lot of time working on it and getting excited to roll it out for next year. So, you know, we've, we've done an awful lot of work as a, as a school to get ready for this. I, I think that, you know, watching what we've done, documenting the things that we've gone through will help the next school or whoever you choose to be next, if you do, to, to have a smooth entryway into it. It was really easier for us. We, we just have enjoyed having the time to work with Catherine and, and to get ready. And it feels like a brand-new school you're starting.
Yes, Dr. McKinney?
Just to add to the discipline part, per policy, there are levels of infraction. All those are recorded in Aspen, and there are letters sent home, and copies of those letters are kept in the child's cume. So parents have access to those. They're usually sent home. But in terms of a record, I just want to be clear, we can run reports in Aspen to see the level of infractions, how many expulsions, how many suspensions, you know? And I think the effort is to look at the data and see, you know, how many high-level offenses or how many small, you know, hallway kind of office, office visits there are so they can respond accordingly. You wouldn't want to have just kids running out of the building and suspending kids without some proactive measures in place.
Thank you. Do you have any more questions? I'm sorry. No, all right. Go ahead, Ms. Johnson.
Thank you. I just want to follow up on Ms. Brown's question. So the data does not follow them to the next grade, right?
I don't believe so. I have not gone through the training yet. That is coming up this summer.
Okay, because if it doesn't, then would that data be wiped clean from the system, and it wouldn't be in that system anymore?
But not from X2. X2 is our system that we keep.
From SWISS?
No. X2 is the districts.
Okay, but SWISS, is that going to follow? SWISS is where you're putting your data in also, right?
SWISS is our individual building, would be our individual building data that we could look at so we could see where the issues are happening and how we can help the children. I don't look at this program at all as a punitive program. This is a learning. It's learning how to, you know, the social, emotional twists of the world and how to, how to help them with this. It is totally a program to help them grow as individuals and not as a punitive thing.
Okay, but, okay, so SWISS, is that the data that's in your system in the, in Dr. Crisp's school? That's your own data?
It will be going forward, yes.
It will be going forward?
Starting in September, yes.
Okay, and that data does not go from first grade to second grade, right?
It is not my understanding that it does. But if something, if it's a, a large infraction, I'm going to put it into X2, and that will follow them.
Okay, so what's going to happen with this data that's not going to follow them? Where is that going to be stored?
I don't have the answer to that. I do not know.
I mean, that's a very important question because people hack into everything. We're hacked all the time, and you don't want any child's data out there that somebody can hack into. So I want to make sure that it's really secure, or is it going to be erased like it never existed? And I think that's an important question that's going to weigh on my mind when we have the vote on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. McKinney, go ahead.
Just to be clear, the SWISS program meets the district's data privacy requirements as outlined by the Technology Department and meets the state guidelines for data privacy. So we are in compliance.
Okay, thank you very much for confirming that.
Ms. Brown, one other thing. Okay, so meets the data privacy. What's going to happen if it doesn't follow the child from first to second grade, to second to third grade? What's going to, what's that, where's that data going? Or is it just stored in the system? That's what I want to know. What's going to happen with that data? Thank you.
So if you send me your question, Mrs. Johnson, I'll get the answer for you.
Okay, thank you. Yes, so that would be, that would actually be wonderful to hear how the SWISS program, if it clears at the end of the cycle, or if it stays in the system, how that's stored. I'm glad that it meets the guidelines of the IT department because I think they are relatively strict. I can, I can sort of understand where the concerns from Ms. Johnson are coming from. The idea that a kid would come into a new classroom with having already been put into a box. And I know that that's not the goal of the system. I know the goal is to make sure that they are learning self-regulatory behaviors at a younger age and not waiting until they're in middle school or high school until it's gotten out of hand. I, so I recognize, and I do think the MTSSB framework is, is solid, but I wouldn't want it to backfire and be in a situation where students are prejudged when they move to the next grade level. So I do think there's concern with, there is a concern with that, but I don't think you are asking for a vote. This is, this is primarily informative this evening, correct? All right. If no one has any other questions, all right. Thank you, ladies, very much. Your presentation was excellent. We appreciate it. And if we have any more questions, we'll direct them to Dr. McKinney.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. The next item on our agenda is the middle school social studies curriculum update, pilot program, I'm sorry. I think we're going to be turning that over to Mr. Parker.
Good evening. Thank you. Thank you. And so this is a second visit, presentation of this proposal. It was tabled last time around to garner more feedback. And so as I state here in the memo, I met with every social studies teacher at all three middle schools. And by building, and then we had a grade six through eight department meeting, of which Ms. Hume Howard from NHI- Ms. Hume Howard from NHLI, who is helping us shepherd through the, did the elementary competency based grading and we're beginning to do that in earnest, starting next year. And she's already met with us. And so I support this program because number one, as I say here in the first bullet, teachers are in the driver's seat. There was a concern that something was going to be handed down to us. And so the success of this pilot rises and falls with the direction our teachers want our kids to know and be able to do because of the study, social studies curriculum. Keep in mind that our curriculum has not been updated six, for the last six or seven years. And the state has, is still in the process of coming up with the standards. They have not been released yet and we don't have a timeline, although we have a connection with the state. So we can still do this work. This is our work. We create it, it's not handed down to us. And so, and it allows our teachers the opportunity to collaborate, cross building, you know, through grade levels, including transitions from elementary to middle school, from middle school to high school. So it's a two-year pilot and we will be working with NHLI. And, and I think this is, it's good for us.
Thank you very much. Does anyone have a question? Go ahead, Ms. Gilio.
I do remember, Mr. Parker, when this came up before and I remember that, that it was, it was tabled for a while because there was concern that there was not enough input from the social studies teachers, if I'm recalling correctly. And so this meeting, the meetings that you had in March, given the extraordinary circumstances of our school year, were you able to get a majority of the social studies teachers to attend these meetings to?
They all attended. They all attended.
Every single one?
Yes.
That's really good. Thank you.
Yes, and so I didn't want, I didn't want any teacher to be able to say they did not have an opportunity to have their say. And I do think there was some miscommunication in the initial go around. People had, for some reason, it was stuck in people's minds, some people's minds, that we would, we would be getting a product. Right? And NHLI is just helping facilitate a process, you know, to get all the ideas, to help foster the collaboration, right? And to really prioritize, all right? And especially when the state standards come out, what we want are a healthy, rigorous social studies curriculum. What does it look like? What are the components of it? Right? And so, and we are long overdue.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I think you're spot on for the timeline. It's been seven years and it is time to update those things, especially if we can kind of at least have some of the work done before the state guidelines come out so that we know how we need to tweak that to meet the standards. I think that's important to get the ball rolling. And so I do support, I support moving forward with this. I have one question. Are we making sure that all three middle schools have aligned curriculum and making sure we're on, we're, yeah, basically the same thing throughout the district?
Yes.
Yes, okay. And a timeline is maybe a year and a half to two years? Is that?
Yes. Yes, and so we put a social studies pilot 2021, 2023. And so once the new, especially in the new year, we'd like to take it up in earnest and really have some time built in where we can dig in.
Awesome. And yeah, new middle school, new curriculum and social studies is a good way to start with that. I love it. Do you have any more questions? No? All right. So I move to recommend to the board to approve the social studies middle school pilot proposal for 21 through 23 for implementation, to start implementation in September of 2021.
Second.
All right, and it's seconded by Ms. Gilio? And Ms. Gilio, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
And I also vote yes, so the motion passes. All right, thank you very much, Mr. Parker, and I thank you for all of the legwork to go and collaborate so thoroughly with the district. Thank you. All right. So the next item is a update on curriculum. Dr. McKinney, is this from you? Thank you very much.
Yes, in the months of May and June, actually, Mr. Parker and I met with the curriculum team and I apologize, the list isn't included, but the list includes all the head teachers in the district, all the curriculum liaisons, all the coaches at the middle and the high school. The purpose of this meeting was to get consensus on how to provide a guaranteed and viable curriculum for our students. And as a result, the 45 members of the curriculum team agree to the following and I'm asking for the board's support with these things. The first four are relative to the curriculum management plan and not to get overly into the details, but Policy IL says the district's curriculum management plan provides guidance for curriculum review and program evaluation. So when you're asking about consistency or is our curriculum up to date, this plan would guide that process. The last plan was, or was done up until 2017 and has expired, so it needs updating. So we need to determine, how do we rewrite curriculum? Who's involved? How do we train people? How do we publish it? How do we make sure it gets in the teachers' hands? So those first four pieces are a part of a process of getting a plan, a draft to the administrators, district office, back to the curriculum team and then brought here to CNE in October. So that plan is up to date and it'll probably be a one-year draft to see how it works and then we can maybe go for a multi-year piece, maybe just give it everything that's going on. We just have a guide for the year. The other things we agreed to was giving all the teachers what they need by September 15th to teach for the year, any curriculum documents, guiding documents, pacing guides, unit plans, they get those by mid-September so they can plan. There were some teachers who wanted them by June 1st so they could work over the summer, but we made a happy compromise and we're going to give that to them on the 15th. Number six was also an area that was some discussion. Policy IJ, just to clarify, the board is responsible for approving all new and primary instructional materials. So when we use StudySync at the middle school, that would be the board's responsibility. But this policy also allows teachers to use online materials, print materials, other instructional materials. But I think also over time, where's the line between the curriculum materials and the supplemental materials? So I think over time, we want to kind of see, is our curriculum working? Is everybody following it or are people supplementing it with other things? I did share with the group, I'm not going to be a curriculum cop and go around and collect things, but we need to know, is the curriculum working? Are we getting the results that we want or not? Seven, these are kind of some priorities for next year, given that so many kids are going to be in different places. I think differentiated instruction is going to be really important. The second piece talks to assessment. How do we know where kids are? That's going to be really important. And then SEL with kids, building relationships and helping them with their own self-awareness. Next piece, we publish an assessment calendar every year. So I think many teachers in the district would agree, sometimes we're good at assessing, but not always great at looking at the results. So included in there is going to be a guideline around data collection, data analysis and questions that go back to grade level teams to look at the four critical questions. What do we want kids to know and be able to do? How are they learning? What are we doing about it? Those things, I think that formative loop has to happen across the district. Last two, elementary teachers are going to work on assessment, performance assessments. I don't know if you remember, but I taught middle school and they would, middle school students would always say, why do we have to learn this? The old answer is because I said so, doesn't really work. So we're trying to come up with creative ways, real world applications for performance assessments that gets kids to demonstrate their learning. And then as Mr. Parker just talked about, middle school teachers and social studies in the LA are going to work on assessment and competencies. So while this doesn't need a motion, I certainly wanted to bring it to the board's attention and ask for your support. In particular, the importance of, you know, revisiting curriculum and not having curriculum in place from five years ago and having, you know, a solid process that allows teacher input, but also a stronger look at assessment and the results and how kids are doing because I think next year is going to be key for a lot of kids. Thank you.
Yes, I have one question. I did notice that the list was not attached and I just, for going forward, it would be helpful if we could see that, that list at some point. I'm, I'm in support of this. I just would like to see who the people are that are, that are working behind the scenes if possible.
Yep, sorry about that. It is on the website. If you go to curriculum and then click on curriculum under curriculum team, it has the list of all of them, from all the coaches, the head teachers. We just meant to print a copy and?
No, that's fine. I can find it on the website. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. So I guess I, I have a couple of questions and it's actually related to the timeline, the dates. With the curriculum management plan and then also when it's going to be presented to the teachers, is that going to be difficult to implement for this year if they're actually getting it almost a month after school starts? Because it's coming in, it looks like it's coming in in September 30th or September 15th. So you, is your plan to start talking about the curriculum development, present that to the teachers then or is your plan to have the curriculum standards, guidelines, power standards prepared for them to use during the 21, 22 school year?
So the first four, the curriculum management plan is really like a higher level document for the administration to work with the curriculum coaches, what the process is going to be, when it happens, how we evaluate it. It wouldn't be a product that would be in the hands of teachers they would need to teach from, but it's really, all right, this is the year we're reviewing the math curriculum or next year we're reviewing social studies curriculum or the year after that we're reviewing, you know, AP psychology or whatever it might be. It gives more detail, but it wouldn't be a product that a teacher would need to be successful in the classroom. It's more, you know, for the board and the administration in terms of the cycles we go on, anything from looking at the data to revising curriculum, training curriculum Does that help in terms of what the document includes?
Yeah, so you're saying it's more like goal setting, that these, this is the timeline for how we're going to address these standards and make sure that they're being met, which is actually kind of my next question. Do you have a plan? How do you plan to measure successes, successes and failures under number seven to prioritize differentiated instruction, planning, execution, the balanced assessments, formative assessments? Do you have a, is that part of the development or how do you, do you, how do you plan to measure that?
So these here in seven will probably be district goals and school goals and ask the principals to help and support that. We're asking principals and Mr. Parker and I and others to do some walkthroughs and visit classrooms and see these sort of things in hap, in action. But assessments in particular, we could speak more about it with Mr. Rodriguez in terms of analytics for assessments and being able to see student learning in real time. So we're going to be able to have some reports that we can run and a dashboard where we can see kid progress. Not that we're going to be breathing down their neck to make sure they're, you know, moving to the next level, but I would like to see where all kids are next year on an ongoing basis so we can evaluate their needs.
All right, I guess actually that was my final follow up was, is this more centered around the student or the teacher, the classroom, whether we're going to be seeing, watching for teachers who see exemplary success or whether we're looking for students and their, I'm guessing, using X2, that kind of thing, like how they're, how they're doing in their test scores and evaluations? Is that kind of what we're looking for to see improvement, like clear educational goals and improvement?
So yes, Aspen would show the student success, but what I learned from talking with the curriculum team is we're pretty strong teachers and they're very crafty. They find great resources. So what they're asking is can we share those across the district and not keep them to themselves and take the ones that aren't helpful out and put the new ones in so that when the new unit plan goes out for, you know, fifth grade math, they all have access to the same things. It's sharing the wealth across the district. So I think it's a little bit of both. It just looks different because obviously it's coming out of Aspen. The other one is more a collaborative effort of teachers of sharing what works and what doesn't.
Okay, thank you very much. Yes, Mrs. Johnson?
Thank you very much. Okay, I want to kind of get back to the sharing of data. I know that a lot of teachers used to go on trips because they, they were going to a conference and they would come back and they were supposed to share all this information that they got. But I guess this will work to share the data, but when we get the data and we see that maybe X amount of kids are not progressing in one class, how are we looking at that? Are we saying that it's the curriculum or are we saying it's the teacher or are we saying it's the way it's being taught? Because we know that there's a lot of problems in the district. We know about this even prior to COVID, that there's been issues in the district with the learning piece. How are we going to correct this whole thing with all this data? Because everything we hear is always data, 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 and it's all, it's all great, but if we're not doing things to fix things and correct things, what good is data?
So first of all, I'm, I'm not familiar with ever, whatever learning pieces or references you're making to in the past. And to suggest that the educators in this district don't spend 180-plus days to figure out the learning challenges that kids have is grossly inaccurate. We have lots of data and that's part of the puzzle of being a teacher is figuring out what's gone wrong. We don't just say it was taught and you didn't catch it. We reteach until there's student success. We're here for the kids. So that happens all the time. What you're suggesting is are there other multi-levels or multi-systems to help kids? So yes, if they didn't get it in the classroom, there are other places where it can be re-taught. We just met today looking at ESAR funds and expanding opportunities for kids. So while I don't have all the answers right now, I don't think anybody here learned to ride a bike the first time. So we have opportunities for kids to practice, learn. We learn by doing, learning from their mistakes and becoming successful. I sat with you at numerous graduations and I saw happy kids cross the stage that learned at high levels and are going on to great places. So we have lots of data and I do think learning has happened. I think the whole world was challenged over the last year and I'm saying in these top 10 things, we are putting a plan together to look at data in real time, I'll bring the reports to the board and show that kids are making gains.
Okay, but I think you, because when I asked the question, because there's, I think there's several tiers here. There's the students not catching it, maybe the way, and I'm not saying anybody's a horrible teacher or anything, that's not what I said. I'm saying maybe the teacher hasn't taught it the way it needs to be because some kids can grasp, some kids can't, as to all the way teaching and learning, because one size does not fit all. But in public education, it is one size fits all because you can't take it apart. Well, you can't, you don't have individual instructions and we don't have?
Could you just share your public school teaching experience? How many years have you taught in a public school?
I haven't. I'm sorry, I haven't.
I'm a state teacher of the year.
Okay, I will track that.
I've taught over 20 years. I know exactly what happens and it's not one size fits all. That's just not fair. The teachers worked really hard this year.
And I'm not saying that they're not. I'm taking a look at it because every child learns differently. So that's why I'm trying to figure out with all the data here that we collect on different styles of learning and different styles of teaching. So that's what I'm kind of asking on all this, not to, I'm trying to degrade anybody, which I'm not. So let's not take it as a negative thing. Let's take it that I'm trying to figure out and parents have asked the questions too because we know this was a tough, challenging year, more challenging than any other times before because I don't think any of us lived through a pandemic like this and hopefully we never will have to. But I just want to make sure with the data that you're taking a look at the child's learning, the teacher's teaching style and anything in between to make sure that this data, that we're taking good looks at the data and we can move the district along here and these kids are going to flourish again. That's how I'm looking because all I hear is with everybody we talk, all we hear is data. And I just want to know, what are we going to do with the data? What we heard before was data, Dr. Chris. Now we're hearing about data again. It's all about data. I want to make sure that we're using the data that's going to move the district and we're going to see some, a lot of progress this year because with the data, we don't know how far back any of the kids are. And yes, it was a great graduation last week, last Wednesday and Thursday, and I'm so glad to see a lot of happy students and I wish them all the best of success in their up and coming lives. And that this isn't supposed to be anything negative because I know people are asking in the in the community, because I was at the public hearing last night and I heard everything and I was open, gave my opinions a little bit too last night on how money is being spent. And they want to see and they want to make sure that the money we're spending in the school district and all the data, that we're going to get a lot of positive results coming up. And that's all I'm asking about the data. Thank you very much.
We work every day for positive results. We work for the kids. We're doing our best. And if you have questions and you run into people from the public who have questions, they should speak to their teacher, the schools, the people that are closely attached to what's going on in the schools. And just because you don't see the data, you don't see the meetings, you don't attend the meetings, it doesn't mean it's not happening. If you don't think that teachers spent numerous hours and time to find creative ways to make sure all kids were successful over the past year, you're mistaken. I don't think it's fair to say that all of last year was a loss or good things didn't happen. We're going to do our very best next year. We set high expectations for our teachers, high expectations for the kids. We may not meet them all the time, but we're doing our very best. While you may not intend to be critical, I do hear a critical piece in your voice. And if people have questions, the best people to answer those questions are in the schools and at the district level.
And that's fine. And I'm, I don't mean to be critical, but I, but last year was very tough and, you know, that's maybe a little bit the way I am. And I ask tough questions and you might take it the wrong way, but you know what? I want to see what's going to happen this year.
I don't take?
And I know the teachers worked very hard last year and we all worked very hard. All the members of the board here worked very hard last year too. And, you know, there were times I didn't think we'd get through some of the meetings because of, you know that, on everything. But you know, I'm a board member. People talk to us. I'm just telling you what I'm hearing out there.
And I'm telling you what I'm hearing from everybody else. My parents are from New York. I went to school in New York. I don't take it the wrong way. I'm just telling you the way it is. And the way it is, is that people worked really hard under difficult circumstances and sometimes you get further with sugar than you do with salt. And sometimes turning around.
I've been throwing some honey out there lately. And I grew, I went to school in New York too.
So moving forward.
Thank you very much.
Moving forward, the board and the administration is the leadership of this district and the sooner they're on the same page and craft out goals for the next year and set expectations instead of, you know, all these other pieces that are happening, the better the district will be and the better the district will flourish. And right now, my expectation for all the educators out there, as I've told them, is to go home and rest and recover and come back 110%. So I hope they're not watching and they come back ready to do the work that needs to be done.
Thank you, Dr. McKinney. And thank you, Mrs. Johnson and Ms. Gilio. All good questions. I think the one good thing that we can bring from this document is that it looks like there's some very clear goals in here about creating assessments and how we're going to move forward with collecting that data and then making sure that it's actually applied. We want to make sure we apply the data to improve the district, not just collect a bunch of information. So that is good and I'm looking forward to seeing some enormous improvements. It'll be great. Dr. McKinney, do you have anything to add?
Madam Chair, if you wouldn't mind just recognizing this last piece, I know it's been a long year for all the teachers, but all New Hampshire special education teachers were recognized as special education teachers of the year for 2020, 21 by the Council of Four Exceptional Children in New Hampshire. I know it's a small token of saying thanks, but I just wanted to recognize them for all they did. It was quite a long year for them.
Absolutely. Thank you so much to all of our special ed teachers, all of our teachers district-wide, but a special acknowledgement of our honored special education teachers as teacher of the year. That's fantastic. We know that they had challenges above and beyond some of the other teachers who were all struggling. So thank you very much and congratulations to all of them.
Well deserved.
So thank you for reminding, reminding me of that. So if we are ready, there's nothing else on our agenda, I move to adjourn.
Second.
Second. All right. So I vote yes.
I vote yes.
And we are adjourned at 6:35. Thank you very much.